This meeting of the school board for Tuesday, August 18th, 2020 is officially in session. We will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Mr. David Buckles, and I will offer the invocation. Let us stand.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Father, in the name of Jesus, God, we come today, God, with uncertainties, and yet, God, we come trusting that we have made the right decisions. God, we trust you in all that we do. And so, God, we pray right now for your divine guidance. For God, there are many that are going through that are anxious, oh, God, but I remember your word in Philippians 4 and 6, which said, "Be anxious for nothing." But in all things, you said with prayer, with supplication, and with thanksgiving, make our requests made known.
Amen.
And so, God, our request is that we will be able to serve our students, that our faculty, our staff, our administrators, our district-level personnel, God, our parents, and our bus drivers, God, all of those that make up this school district will be safe. That is our prayer. God, for we are up against an enemy that we cannot see. But we know, God, that you know all things and you see all things. And so, God, we pray right now that you will guide our tongues, our hearts, our minds, and our thoughts, God, that everything that we say and do, God, will be one that will bring unity. God, for we realize that a harsh word stirreth up wrath, but a smooth word calms. And so, God, just help us to be mindful of that. And then, out of all that is happening in our country, God, our prayer is that you will help keep the United States united. For God, in times like these, we need you. And we just pray, God, guide us in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Wonderful.
At this time, we will have our presentation, Commissioner's Business Recognition Award for Putnam County. For Putnam County, it will be presented to the Palatka Daily News by Superintendent Dr. Rick Serency.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Mr. Leonard is right on time. Getting timed any better. But, yeah, I understand. Thank you for being here. And I'm very excited to be able to do a presentation in person. We haven't done one of those in a while, have we?
No.
Anyway, I just thought this was one of these situations that we just definitely had to do this in person. And this award has recently started, I think, a year or so ago, where every single district in the state selects a business partner who has been very influential in helping us with our mission. And so, back in the spring, we actually selected the Palatka Daily News. And let me just read a little bit on what they have done and why they are such a valuable partner to what the Putnam County School District does. First of all, they've been, under Mr. Leonard's guidance, have established Positively Putnam. And you read that in the paper every day. And we are actually part of that team, like 10 partners. And we really go out and stress, you know, what's going on positively in Putnam. And most recently, if you saw in the paper, Positively Putnam made a donation to the district in the form of cleaning supplies and disinfectants and that type of thing. And we have that photo op at E. H. Miller. The recent product of Putnam, which we had seven individuals this year, recognized for former graduates who've come back and given back to our community. Palatka Daily News, along with the Chamber of Commerce, is a valuable partner and has helped us with that program starting last year. So that's been a great success. Our Back to School section of the Palatka Daily News, which I think is coming out very soon, with Back to School, they've been a great partner with that, helping, you know, get information out to parents and highlighting some of the things that our district is doing. The Graduation Section has been phenomenal this past year, and especially in light of what's going on with our graduation ceremonies. They have really spent a lot of ink space on highlighting our graduates. We certainly appreciate that. They've been sponsors for our Top Scholars sections. They put all the pictures in the paper. Our Top 8th Grade Graders section, put those kids' pictures in there. Our School Supply drives. And also, the coverage for our athletics. And that has been phenomenal, and, you know, they just highlight that every day. So I just want to ask Mr. Michael Leonard, the publisher of the Palatka Daily News, to step up here for just a minute. And let me read what it says here. It says, "Congratulations," from the Department of Education. Says, addressed to myself, says, "Congratulations on having your business partner recognized as an honoree for the 2020 Commissioner's Business Recognition Awards. You have provided innovative learning opportunities in your community, and our students' academic performance is evidence that your collaborative efforts are paying off. Florida's graduation rate is at a 16-year-high of 86.9%, an increase of 27.7 percentage points since 2003, 2004. Florida maintains top national rankings for K-12 student achievement, soaring in at fourth in the nation. And we sincerely appreciate you for giving your time and resources to help Florida's future leaders and innovators. And we look forward to seeing this partnership grow in the coming years, witnessing the impact it will have on future generations of Florida students. Thank you for your commitment to enhancing Florida's educational system." So with that, we have a plaque to present. Says, "This award is presented to the Palatka Daily News for providing innovative learning opportunities in your community, enhancing Florida's educational system." So this is presented to Mr. Leonard. Let's give him a round of applause. You want to take a little photo off here? Do you want to move up? Tell us where it's standing. Let me put some masks on, because I took off the top. Make sure we're being safe here.
You look better with that mask.
I know.
He ain't gonna throw that pen at me. I know. Pass this.
I don't think I'll smile like that.
Thank you, Michael. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
And again, thank you on behalf of the school board.
Did Mr. Leonard have to call me?
Sure.
Yes, yes.
Just a quick second. I just wanted to say what a great partnership the newspaper believes it has with the Putnam County School District and so many other businesses in our community. Our company believes that strong newspapers help build strong communities. And part and parcel of doing that, of having those partnerships, is building relationships. And we help, we want to take a stand in favor of those things that are good for our community. Certainly, a strong school system is very much at the forefront of that. So thank you for this recognition and for allowing us to partner with you.
Thank you.
By the way, I want to point out, when Mr. Leonard first came to town, I don't know if I was the first, but I was one of the first for him to literally come and visit. And he actually took the initiative to say, "Hey, let's partner and see what we can do to work together." So ever since then, it's been a great partnership. And Michael, thank you for everything. We'll see you guys be safe.
Okay, at this time, we are ready for our public comments. We want to remind those that will be addressing the board, due to the number of people requesting an opportunity to share or express his or her opinion, we're going to ask that you limit yourself to the three minutes. We do have a timekeeper, and we're going to ask that you please honor that time that is allotted because of the number of requests that we have. And you will address the board. We will not engage in a dialogue with you, but we do want you to understand that we do hear you, and it is duly noted, and we will do whatever is in our power to answer or to take care of what you have suggested or pointed out. All right? With that being said, we're going to call Mrs. Nancy Wild. She's going to be discussing the subject of cyberbullying. She has provided a handout for each board member and...
Oh, that's nice.
I'm Nancy Wild, and I work at Middleton Bernie Elementary School. Many of you know me, you know I'm not a saint. I've been married three times. I've made a lot of mistakes. I'm trying to learn and do the best I can.
Nancy, you need to speak into the microphone.
I'm not a saint.
They can't hear you.
Okay. Today, my assistant principal spoke to us about the importance of considering what we post on Facebook and online. And especially think about parents and families and the choices they make and whether they choose virtual or not, or brick and mortar. Those are important decisions for each family to make. So I thought about cyberbullying. Let me read this real quick. Bullying is an unwanted aggressive behavior that involves a real or perceived power imbalance. Bullying often has a potential for happening more than once, and that's why I'm here. I saw this, I'm shaking a bit because it's a little upsetting, but I saw this on Facebook. And if you want to see what I'm doing, it's right there. So I don't condone this. I'm not sure if any of you condone this. I'm not sure if any of you have addressed this, or if everybody's just staying quiet. But what I've learned as an educator is that when someone is bullying others, it's our responsibility to speak up. In fact, teachers watch a video all about this and how to handle this and what to do about it. And the one thing you don't do is ignore it, because then that empowers the bullying. So I just want to say that, Mr. Buckles, if you indeed did this, I hope that you would consider curbing your enthusiasm in some ways. One of the ways that's proven to combat bullying is for leaders to foster a positive environment and culture in the school, or business, or wherever it might be. And I believe by posting this, you have done exactly the opposite. And I just wanted to address it because I believe that's the correct thing to do.
Thank you, Nancy. I did, I did post this, and I did pull it down after some people took it and shared it on a real, a really odd, in a fashion, all around the state, as they did on another thing not too long ago. And I don't know if you remember, but all the years, and I know you do know that by law, we stand in loco parente. We stand in the place of the parent. And, you know, we're trained to run to the sound of gunfire to protect our children. And, you know, I was probably not the best choice to post. And it has been pulled down, but there are some that are really trying to keep it active because they're trying to make, they're trying to make more out of matter than what it was meant to be. But thank you.
Yes, sir. And I don't want to make more of it, but I want you to know that it hurts. And we look to you, school board members, to be those leaders for us. And when we see things like this, it's upsetting, and I just wanted to...
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Wild.
Thank you.
Oh, last time, they sent them that way.
It's still raining out there.
Okay. Mr. Buckles, I do, I do think that you needed to say something in regards to that.
Well, I got a lot I could say, but I'll hold back for now.
Yeah. But what we want to do, what we want to do is caution ourselves so that we don't get bogged down, is to not comment. Yours, in that regard, had to be done.
Yeah.
All right. So that's it. We'll move on. Yes, sir, I understand. All right? The board recognizes Mr. Chris Janson. If I, if I'm seeing it correctly, J-A-N-S-O-N, from Jacksonville, Florida. School reopening. Mr. Janson, good afternoon. If you will state your name and your address, and then you may share with us, sir.
Sure. My name is Chris Janson. I live in Jacksonville, Florida, where I'm involved in efforts to strengthen communities so they function better for youth and families. I also prepare educators. But I'm here today to stand in solidarity with Putnam County educators, students, and community members. Many of them are unable or unafraid to speak to you today. Therefore, I'm here to take three minutes to speak on their behalf and read a large section of their comments and concerns based on the results of an anonymous community survey. When they were asked, "What's one thing that you'd like district leadership to know or hear?" These are some of their responses. "Schools should not open in person. People are dying. Children are dying. How can you just ignore that? How many children's deaths are acceptable? How many teachers are expendable? With one of our school deans in the hospital on a ventilator, I'd recommend virtual school only. How many other people are you willing to put to risk or lose? This is not an experiment. We know the risks involved, and we have the means to provide virtual for the first semester." Another. "These kids are testing positive with no fevers. Only symptoms are a common cold. It should be mandatory testing for students and staff. How can we safely open with all these new daily cases?" Another. "I'd like to hear the voices of the teachers and kids for their safety. This early return is going to shut us back down and cause more infection. I want district leadership to think forward a few weeks to the next death. Do you want that on your conscience? Because if you make this choice to start with brick and mortar schools, more teachers, more children will die. Statistically, it's a guarantee, and you will have voted for it. We should be planning for an effective virtual instruction now instead of scrambling again if and when schools shut down." Yet another. "We do not have desks in our classrooms and have been told that there simply just isn't any to be found. We cannot properly socially distance our students without desks. We have not been given any kind of solution. I'm terrified to return to work, but financially do not have the option to quit. I elected option one because there are people at my school and in my department that have more serious health concerns than me that needed option two. The options that the teachers were given are not being honored. We are being forced to teach face-to-face, even if we choose or chose option two. The options that teachers were given weren't granted. Many at-risk teachers are going to suffer needlessly." Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Janson, thank you. Thank you. Ms. Tricia Mack, opening of schools. Tricia Mack. You will state your name and your address, and then you may share with us.
Good afternoon. My name is Trista Mack, and I live in East Palatka. I'm a local county resident, a taxpayer, a graduate of Palatka High School, and I'm very supportive of public education. Like my friend Chris, I'm here to speak to you today on behalf of Putnam County educators, students, and community members who are unable or afraid to speak to you today. When asked, "What is one thing that you want our district leadership to know or hear?" Your community responded as follows. "If the president doesn't find it fit for people to go out and vote, then it's not fit for our students to be in school. If the superintendent, a man who promised he would take every precaution to keep our children and faculty safe from this virus, can get the virus, then how is he expecting to protect everyone else? I feel like he is appealing to the voting pool more than he is appealing to the health and safety of the parents, students, and teachers that are involved with PCSD." Another. "Have you considered that a great percentage of our students are being cared for by elderly? Older and comprised teachers are being forced to teach face-to-face. Many classrooms at my school are still, excuse me, are small, poorly ventilated, and have no windows. Yet we are still told to teach in those rooms. Putnam needs organized curriculum from a reputable source. The curriculum being invented doesn't translate well to distance learning and has no scope and sequence. It is too early to open schools with brick and mortar classes. The cases are getting out of control while Putnam County is seeing more deaths. It is not safe to return to classrooms. Even one death is too many. Opening schools right now is a terrifying thought. The trauma of losing a teacher or friend at school is coming if we open. We want to be back at school. We just want it not to be at the risk of people's lives. There are people working for the district that are going on vacations, throwing pool parties, and having cookouts with groups of others. I am more concerned about getting COVID from one of these coworkers I see partying it up on Facebook than from one of my students. This rush to open is dangerous. Schools are not set up for social distancing. When visiting the school, people were not wearing masks or social distancing as they should. If they aren't doing it, how can we expect them to make sure students are? As this one, "As a student, I think reopening the schools without a cure is a really bad decision since it will spread the coronavirus even more. This will be a step back in controlling the spread of the virus." And finally, "As a teacher, I know we are not prepared to face the challenges ahead. I thank you for your time."
Thank you, Mrs. Mack.
Was she continuing on the anonymous?
Mr. Tommy V. Azor.
Has she read that? Was she still continuing the poll? Did they take it because of the way she read it? I don't know. Did you take it that way?
Mr. Tommy V. Azor.
But I believe they've had several different polls. And if they're anonymous, what difference do they make?
Well, when she said it was her friend Chris, it just continued. So I just want to be clear.
If you will state your name and address first, please, sir, and then you may continue.
Yes, my name is Tommy Azor. I live in Palatka, Florida. I have school-aged children. One is a special-niece child, and I also have a newborn. So I have a big dog in this fight. So, but I want to speak up for the ones that can't speak here today. I'm here to stand in solidarity with Putnam County educators, students, and community members. Many of them are unable and afraid to speak today. Therefore, I'm here to take three minutes to speak on their behalf. A large section of their comments and concerns based on the results of an anonymous community survey. When asked, "What is one thing that you want our district leaders to know or hear?" This is how your community responded. "It is presently too unsafe for students and teachers to return in-person schooling. Employees are scared to work in this environment in the schools. I do not feel safe. I do not feel valued. I don't believe we should be on campus at all, students or no students, until after Christmas break. I don't think any amount of cleaning or sanitizing is going to keep this from spreading with so many bodies in forced contact at the length of time we'll be together. Many periods with large classes and no way to spread them out to the CDC guidelines is a huge concern. But a lot of us working at the schools have health issues. Reopening is not safe. I am worried for my mom's life. Some students need access to online learning due to compromised family, household members and making learning available online to be better to protect the people in our community. We should have begun online since our community positivity rate is above 5%. This is not safe. School districts all over the country are closing after new outbreaks. We know it will happen, and we know we need to avoid the preventable sickness and death it will bring to students and staff. I understand there are concerns for school openings for mental support of kids. Yet I'm just as concerned upon return for their mental well-being as many live in a multi-generational household. Some have already been stressed to bring something home that they were infected with that could cause a great-grandma, a pop, or any family member was sick and hospitalized and possibly died. Where are the specific school plans for keeping students and staff safe? Why have they not been shared with the public? Have you requested these from each principal? If not, why not? If they are not yet complete, why are you allowing buildings to open? Can you say certainly and safe that our children will be safe without this information? That teacher and staff do far more than was expected of them and should be paid accordingly. Students need them to be transparent and show us their concrete plans. I don't feel safe going back to school. Lastly, we are scared."
Thank you, Ms. Azor.
Thank you.
We got emergency generators. Is that not, is that a bad thing to say? I need to be careful. Business recognition.
Ms. Sarah D. Pines. Opening schools, concerned citizen, re-education. Mrs. Pines, if you will give us your name, full name, and your address, and then you may share, please.
Thank you. I'm Sarah Pines. I live in Palatka. I don't currently have children in school, but I have a son who graduated and several grandchildren who have graduated from Palatka High. I'm here today to stand in solidarity with Putnam County educators, students, and community members. Many of them are unable or afraid to speak to you today. Therefore, I am here to take three minutes to speak on their behalf and read a large section of their comments and concerns based on the results of an anonymous community survey. The question was, "What is one thing you would say to the district leadership if you felt it was safe to say it?" The first one. "It is not safe to have a person in school right now. Our children and our teachers deserve to be safe." Number two. "How many children will have to die before we think it's worth the risk? We already have lost one too many. The teachers I have spoken with are afraid to say how they feel about opening for fear of losing their jobs. They have my children's health and their own lives in mind, but are afraid to speak up. I'm disappointed in the quality of leadership we have in our county. Our children's lives and health should be the priority. What value will education have? Are we willing to have the death of a child? Is a paycheck worth the life of an employee? With everything being so uncertain, why not choose to make the first semester of schooling completely online, just like other districts have decided to do? Save money on sanitizing supplies for the first semester and actually invest in reaching out to emotionally be there for students? Families coming together to support each other instead of bashing each other through their ideas on what to do should take center stage." Number fifteen, you should be listening to educators and parents only versus businesses about a reopening plan. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Guerrero. Mr. Dave Mathia, I hope I pronounced it correctly. Mr. Dave Mathia, uh, Mathia. Sorry with the mispronunciation. If you will state your name and address, then you can share with us, sir.
Hello, my name is Dave Mathia.
Okay.
Uh, I live near Hawthorne in Putnam County. Uh, my wife is a teacher in Putnam County. Uh, I'm not going to go through the preamble about the list that we've been reading to you. I'll just go right into it. Question, "Why did you blame the union for not putting out an employee survey when the employees report to you? Question, "Will parents be notified when someone at the school has tested positive? Question, "Why is it you can't hold meetings in person, yet you want my child to go to school? Question, "Why have no other school board members or district leaders condemned the virus hoax theory shared by one of you online? People are dying, and that sort of irresponsible online behavior must be denounced. Question, "What will happen when one student or a student's family member gets sick? Will the whole class be sent home? Students who rode the bus together? Will teachers, staff be able to be with their families if they are sick, to take care of their children, take off their children when needed?" Typed out weird. Question, "How are you planning on safeguarding each student and faculty member, including all parents, custodial employees, bus driver, and cafeteria staff?" This is a specialized question. "Why is the migrant education program not functioning anymore to help parents and students, and what are the plans to really improve parent involvement during this time? If a, question, if a child dies from contacting the, contracting the virus from school and spreads it, would you hold yourself accountable? Question, "What is being done about the HVAC systems carrying the virus? Uh, my wife works in a closed room, can't open the doors, can't open the windows, so they depend on that HVAC system. Question, "How are we making sure that kids are not being sent to school sick? This happens all the time with regular illnesses." Question, "What is the threshold for taking all brick-and-mortars to online learning? Question, "How do we report a school or facility or admin or student or parent when CDC protocol is violated and we're all put at risk? What happens when kids won't keep masks on? Will they be sent home? Question, "Assuming we return face-to-face, what is the threshold before our campus closes down? What will it take for board slash superintendent to start virtual and reevaluate our situation at a later time for returning to face-to-face? What liability is the district prepared to assume when an employee or student falls gravely ill or dies because of contact, contracting COVID at school? Question." Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you so much. Mr. Mathia, thank you.
Wasn't it David Mathias? Yeah.
Okay. The other one, I'm having difficulty reading it, and I'm going to attempt just the last name. Is it Seiko? Ms. Seiko? I'm not sure. And I'm sorry about the mispronunciation. If you will state your name and address, you may then share with us.
Thank you, ma'am. My name is Reyna Saco. I live in.
Saco, thank you.
I live in Gainesville, Florida. I'm here today to stand in solidarity with Putnam County educators, students, and community members. Many of them are unable or afraid to speak to you today. Therefore, I am here to take three minutes after driving an hour to get here to speak on their behalf and read a large section of their comments and concerns based on the results of an anonymous survey. These courageous parents responded to the survey in Spanish. Do you have an interpreter?
No.
Well, I hope you can go back on the record to hear what they said and have yourselves informed of what they said.
We do have, we do have an interpreter. She stepped out for just a minute.
Mrs. Carmody, if you will pause the time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes.
As far as conspiracy theory, I think I have an obligation to respond to the gentleman prior. I know it's not a conspiracy. I have lost a loved one and loved ones already, and my grandkids having contact with me has made my wife live at her daughter's house for the last three or four months.
Our interpreter's here.
Okay, well, I'm just to the point that, uh, when you got the many thousands and thousands of people that are working, I was trying to make a point, and it has been removed, but I'm going to hear it, I'm sure.
Okay.
Get off Facebook.
Ms. Reyna Saco, if you will go ahead and start sharing.
Thank you, ma'am. Que ellos tomen en cuenta que muchas personas trabajan. They understand that a lot of people work. Y que pudiéramos tener la oportunidad. And we hope to have the opportunity. De darles las clases online por la tarde a los niños. To give classes to students online. Volver a la escuela cuando sea más seguro. To return to the schools when it's safe. Y favorable para los estudiantes y maestros. In favor of teachers and students. No consideras que los estudiantes? How about this? I'm going to stand over here. She can hear me. She'll speak in English.
Will you just speak English?
Oh, yeah. I'm reading statements in Spanish that were made in Spanish.
Okay. No consideras que los estudiantes? They do not like that the students.
Usan o veo, o veo, cubre boca y nariz todo el tiempo.
They have to use the mask all day.
En lo personal, lo que quisiera que le escuchen.
The personnel would like for you to understand.
And, y, o sepan es que.
And to know that.
Por mi parte, no veo seguro.
For, for myself, I don't see security.
Que se reabran nuevamente las escuelas.
For the school to reopen.
Ya que se estado viendo.
As we see now, things are, that things are happening.
Que los niños también son propensos al virus.
That the students are also in jeopardy of this virus.
Y por ellos puede ser más rápida la propagancia.
And for them, it's easier to, um, catch this virus.
Ya que por ellos no tener tan claro el peligro del virus.
Since we're unaware of the dangers for them to catch this virus.
No están en capacidad de tener el extremo cuidado.
We don't have the capacity to actually, to have that knowledge to take care of them.
Esto es para los más pequeños.
This is for the students, the smaller students.
Me gustaría y me sentiría más segura.
I would like and I would feel more secure.
Que estos meses que restan el 2020.
And the rest of these months of 2020.
La escuela fuera virtual.
The school to be virtual.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so, so much. Okay.
Ms. Roder, is she going to be available on the road for a minute? Thanks.
I'm going to assume that this is Mr. Joshua Mast. I'm thinking it's M-A-S-T.
Uh, yes.
Okay. Mr. Joshua Mast on school reopening.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Give you a name and address, sir.
My name is Joshua Mast. I live in East Palatka. Uh, I'm a Putnam County native and currently running for election to the Putnam County Board of County Commissioners for District Three. Um, I'm here today to stand in solidarity with Putnam County educators, students, and community members. Uh, many have asked me to come and speak on their behalf today. Um, to jump right into it, uh, the community responded as follows to an anonymous survey. One, please let us do online teaching for at least the first nine weeks or until our case numbers stop escalating. Two, I want them to address the racial inequities in the district. Our schools allow teacher assistants and receptionists to call parents with information and without clear instructions to provide meaningful answers. They only send things via social media and neglect to use proper and official communication channels. Three, if I could take a leave of absence this year, I would. I can't afford to do that. If I knew we were in the business of safety versus childcare so parents could work, I would feel more proud of our district. I feel the concerns of the employees haven't been prioritized. We're more willing to let good teachers go earlier than to make parents take responsibility for their children. Four, you're gambling with our lives and you appear thoughtless and careless. My school has yet to release anything besides, quote, "Come back to school." Why should I feel safe? Five, I don't see how going back is going to work. Kids will be kids. If you can't get the adults to cooperate with recommendations and guidelines, how do you expect kids to? Six, our children, children's and adults' lives are worth more than currying favor with the Governor, David and Rick. Seven, a solid virtual system should have been the work since last spring. We had the time and knew it was a possibility. Why hasn't it been made a priority? And, sorry, I think this is a mis-typed. Um, eight, I'm not paid enough to put mine and my family's lives at risk. Now, there are many more comments, but in the essence of time, I wanted to jump to the end. I think that there's been a, a touch on an issue here that needs to be addressed. So, before I leave here today, um, as a public figure in this county now, I feel I have a responsibility to bring, uh, an issue to light that hasn't fairly been addressed. Uh, Mr. Buckles has served this community for decades, and we thank him for his service. However, school board members are elected to nonpartisan positions, and your responsibility is to serve the interest of all of your constituents. Mr. Buckles has repeatedly shared many far-reaching conspiracy theories on his Facebook page, calling the COVID-19 pandemic a hoax, along with constant divisive and demeaning comments towards an entire group of people whom he disagrees with politically. It is because of this that I am calling for the immediate resignation of Mr. Buckles due to his inherent inability to be an objective school board member. Every man, woman, and child deserves to have the same sense of safety and security regardless of your political affiliations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mast.
Thank you, Mr. Mast.
Mr. Leonard Freeman.
How many do we have signed?
One more.
Four more?
One.
One more picture.
As far as conspiracy theory, I think I have an obligation to respond to the gentleman prior. I know it's not a conspiracy. I have lost a loved one and loved ones already, and my grandkids having contact with me has made my wife live at her daughter's house for the last three or four months.
Our interpreter is here.
Okay, well, I'm just to the point that when you got the many thousands and thousands of people that are working, I was trying to make a point, and it has been removed, but I'm gonna hear it, I'm sure.
Okay.
Get off Facebook.
Ms. Reyna Sacco, if you will go ahead and start sharing.
Thank you, ma'am. Que ellos tomen en cuenta que muchas personas trabajan. They understand that a lot of people work. Y que pudiéramos tener la oportunidad. And we hope to have the opportunity. De darles las clases online por la tarde a los niños. To give classes to students online. Volver a la escuela cuando sea más seguro. To return to the schools when it's safe. Y favorable para los estudiantes y maestros. In favor of teachers and students. No consideran que los estudiantes. How about this? I'm gonna stand over here. She can hear me. She'll speak in English.
Will you just speak English?
Oh, yeah. I'm reading statements in Spanish that were made in Spanish.
Okay.
Um, no consideran que los estudiantes. No, no consideran que los estudiantes.
They do not like that the students.
Usan cubre boca y nariz todo el tiempo.
They have to use the mask all day.
En lo personal, lo que quisiera que le escuchen.
The person I would like for you to understand.
And, y, o sepan es que.
And to know that.
Por mi parte, no veo seguro.
For, for myself, I don't see security.
Que se reabran nuevamente las escuelas.
For the school to reopen.
Ya que se estado viendo.
As we see now, things are, that things are happening.
Que los niños también son propensos al virus.
That the students are also in jeopardy of this virus.
Y por ellos puede ser más rápida la propagancia.
And for them, it's easier to catch this virus.
Ya que por ellos no tener tan claro el peligro del virus.
Since we're unaware of the dangers for them to catch this virus.
No están en capacidad de tener el extremo cuidado.
We don't have the capacity to actually, to have that knowledge to take care of them.
Esto es para los más pequeños.
This is for the students, the smaller students.
Me gustaría y me sentiría más segura.
I would like and I would feel more secure.
Que estos meses que restan, el 2020.
And the rest of these months of 2020.
La escuela fuera virtual.
The school to be virtual.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so, so much. Okay.
Ms. Parker, she's gonna be available on the road for a minute. Thanks.
I'm gonna assume that this is Mr. Joshua Mast. I'm thinking it's M-A-S-T.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Joshua Mast on school reopening. Good afternoon. Give you a name and address, sir.
My name is Joshua Mast. I live in East Palatka. I'm a Putnam County native and currently running for election to the Putnam County Board of County Commissioners for District Three. I'm here today to stand in solidarity with Putnam County educators, students, and community members. Many have asked me to come and speak on their behalf today. To jump right into it, the community responded as follows to an anonymous survey. One, please let us do online teaching for at least the first nine weeks or until our case numbers stop escalating. Two, I want them to address their racial inequities in the district. Our schools allow teacher assistants and receptionists to call parents with information and without clear instructions to provide meaningful answers. They only send things via social media and neglect to use proper and official communication channels. Three, if I could take a leave of absence this year, I would. I can't afford to do that. If I knew we were in the business of safety versus childcare so parents could work, I would feel more proud of our district. I feel the concerns of the employees haven't been prioritized. We're more willing to let good teachers go earlier than to make parents take responsibility for their children. Four, you're gambling with our lives and you appear thoughtless and careless. My school has yet to release anything besides, quote, "Come back to school." Why should I feel safe? Five, I don't see how going back is going to work. Kids will be kids. If you can't get the adults to cooperate with recommendations and guidelines, how do you expect kids to? Six, our children, children's and adults' lives are worth more than currying favor with the Governor David and Rick. Seven, a solid virtual system should have been the work since last spring. We had the time and knew it was a possibility. Why hasn't it been made a priority? And, sorry, I think this is a mis-typed. Eight, I'm not paid enough to put mine and my family's lives at risk. Now, there are many more comments, but in the essence of time, I wanted to jump to the end. I think that there's been a, a touch on an issue here that needs to be addressed. So before I leave here today, as a public figure in this county now, I feel I have a responsibility to bring an issue to light that hasn't fairly been addressed. Mr. Buckles has served this community for decades, and we thank him for his service. However, school board members are elected to nonpartisan positions, and your responsibility is to serve the interest of all of your constituents. Mr. Buckles has repeatedly shared many far-reaching conspiracy theories on his Facebook page, calling the COVID-19 pandemic a hoax, along with constant divisive and demeaning comments towards an entire group of people whom he disagrees with politically. It is because of this that I am calling for the immediate resignation of Mr. Buckles due to his inherent inability to be an objective school board member. Every man, woman, and child deserves to have the same sense of safety and security regardless of your political affiliations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mast.
Thank you, Mr. Mast.
How many do we have signed it?
One more.
Four more?
One. Mr. Freeman, if you will state your name and address for the record, please. How are you doing?
I'm Leonard Freeman, 422 River Street, Palatka, Florida. Good to be here with you.
Good to have you.
A few days ago, a true American hero died. John Lewis was an extraordinary man who lived by his motto, "If you see something wrong, do something about it." That's why I'm here. I do see a few things that I think are wrong, and I want to help you do something about it. About four months ago, I was recruited to be part of a team working for the Florida Department of Health to combat COVID-19. I'm officially a case investigator. I was trained by Johns Hopkins University and the World Health Organization, WHO, and the Florida Department of Health. Today, I'm offering my thoughts about the pandemic and how it is driving a paradigm shift in how we educate our children. I am not representing the Florida Department of Health in any way. I call and interview people who have tested positive for the virus. So far in this grueling effort, I have called and spoken directly with over 2,000 Floridians all over the state. About a month ago, I made a call, shook me up a little bit. I just wanted to relate that conversation with you for your consideration. For HIPAA regulation reasons, the exact specifics cannot be related, so I'll try to get the story as complete as is allowed. You may also have heard or experienced yourself that COVID-19 test results can take over a week or more to be processed, which was the situation with the following case. I placed a call to John Smith, that's not his real name, to inform him that he tested positive for COVID-19. My information about John indicated that his age was mid-40s. A woman answered the phone, and I asked for John Smith, and she said, "I am his wife. He died Monday in the hospital of COVID-19." I'd made a few calls to people on my list who were deceased, but considering the age of this man, this one seemed different. My difficult task required that I ask a few questions while trying to offer condolences to the now widow on the other end of the phone. I learned that John Smith was a teacher and a coach, and he'd worked with students in summer school at the time, unlike today, when the disease had diminished somewhat in Florida. It's not clear how John became infected, but it is known that a student was later tested positive for COVID-19. This tragedy has played out again and again, in similar fashion every day since that day in Florida and across this country. Predictions by the brightest epidemiologists in the world regarding the next few months are very grim. My case investigator job has been painful at times. My day is filled with talking to lots of people who have loved ones who have died of COVID-19, and in many cases, they're very afraid for their children, parents, and themselves. There's a level of stress and anxiety rarely ever seen outside of a war zone. I have to look at the numbers every few hours. They are not getting any better, and they won't be better by our school opening first day. Before we go back to school, we must have, or at least have, more of the answers. Can you allow me just a few more minutes?
Judge, please keep him another.
I am sure by now you're keenly aware of the catastrophic failures of attempts to reopen schools in Florida, Georgia, and around the country. The story of Cherokee County, Georgia, is a classic example of an epic failure to ensure the safety of students, teachers, and staff in not one, but three schools. On the very first day, the first day of school, amid lax precautions, not much different than what we're planning to implement, COVID-19 was spread. At my last count, more than 2,500 individuals were quarantined and about 200 tested positive. This is a devastating blow to a relatively small community that will have impacts, possibly for many years. And, and closer at home, at least three Florida counties have experienced similar failures when trying to reopen brick-and-mortar schools, and there's actually been a fourth one added: Leon, Bradford, Baker, and Martin Counties so far, with three school district employees dying in one county, and a principal and his wife testing positive for COVID-19, and now over 300 more in quarantine today, along with at least 15 teachers who can't work, but they're gonna need to get paid. I am not sure how we think that we are better prepared or that we can prevent this exact same situation from happening in our schools.
Okay.
What have I learned in doing this job that I do is that the virus knows no boundaries. This perpetrator is everywhere. It will be in many classrooms in our community very soon. We are not any smarter or any better equipped than any other counties or our neighbor state.
Leonard, for those of us that know you, we love you and, and we hear you.
And listen to the rest of what I have to say.
Okay.
I appreciate your love and appreciation. Right now, the perpetrator, right now, the perpetrator is smarter than we are, and, and none of our able guardians with big pistols under their belt are a match for COVID-19. And a final thought: We need to stand up for our precious children, our awesome teachers, and fantastic staff and administrators. Not let ourselves be bullied by self-serving politicians who refuse to accept science and listen to experts and put us and the children of love that we love in Florida at extreme risk. Threatening to withhold money is a cheap shot. What amount of money is a third grader worth these days? What's the price of a teacher? A bus driver? An aide? Let's plan to make virtual learning successful. Devote energy and knowledge to making it work. Devote money to internet connectivity, not Plexiglas and sanitizer. Face the facts, everybody.
All right.
We are all in the midst of a pandemic that is forcing us to change how we educate our children.
Mr. Freeman.
We all want to be back to normal, but normal and all that warm and fuzzy and huggy stuff that we so love is now far in the future.
Mr. Freeman.
Something is wrong. Let's do something now.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you. It is, you and I go way back.
Many, many years.
And we've allowed you to share, but I think it was, we got your point. God knows, we, we felt and heard what you said, but it is unfair when you have infringed on the time of the others. Your message is true, and, and it's to the point, but I.
I apologize for the unfairness, if that's what you deem it to be, Ms. Gilliard.
The time-wise, not the message.
Yeah.
The time that we ask.
Here's my point. What, what amount of time is it really worth for us to, to make sure that we have our, our teachers and our students and our staff safe?
Yes, sir.
What amount of time is it worth to consider that?
Yes, sir.
Many Florida mayors have already restricted gatherings and enclosures.
Yes, sir.
And they've restricted it 50, or 20, or 5.
Leonard, we.
And in five days, we're gonna put 1,500 people in Palatka High School.
Everything you've talked about, we've discussed.
One time.
We agree. I mean, I understand.
Thank you very much.
Don't think that I don't value my daughter who teaches and my grandchildren who attend school, okay?
I have a daughter that teaches as well.
But I love you, and I get it, you know, but, but we need to move on. Thank you. I'm not the chairman, that'll be her.
All right.
I'll be looking forward to your comments, Mr. Buckles and others.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Freeman.
Thank you, Leonard.
At this time, our final speaker will be on the coronavirus transmission, the rates in children, by Mr. Anthony Marvin.
We might stick with the three minutes from now. I was pretty soft in asking, and I'm sorry, I beg you.
I think, yeah, you should have.
I knew Anthony Marvin, he grew up next to me.
If you will state your name and your address, you may then share with us, sir.
Thank you. My name is Anthony Marvin. I live in San Mateo, Florida. My family has been here in Palatka for over 100 years. I'm sure many of you know my parents.
Absolutely.
Mr. Buckles, I'm seconding the recommendation to ask that you step down because of this.
Thank you.
And not, this proves that you are willing to put politics before scientific facts. So, in my three minutes, I want to read you guys some numbers, because I don't want you to be able to say you did not know. Your meme about grocery store workers, I guess you are not aware.
That I did.
I guess you are not aware that in the first 100 days of the virus, according to the United Food and Commercial Workers International Union, 82 grocery store workers died in the first 100 days, 238 retail workers died in the first 100 days, and almost 30,000 employees were exposed in North America. 238 retail workers dead in the first 100 days. All children are capable of getting the virus. Every single day, we are finding out more and more things, and any attempt to minimize this has to be met with skepticism, because it gets worse every single day. It is true children not become as sick as adults. It is true children do not die at the rates of adults, but children in the United States as of today are between 7% to 9%, this is children under 18 years of age, are 7% to 9% of total infections in the United States, and they make up 5.3% of hospitalizations and 0.4% of total deaths. A study from the CDC that came out on July 19th conclusively found that children between the ages of 10 and 19 can transmit COVID as effectively as adults. Seven days ago, children ages 0 to, this was a study from Harvard Medical School, and this is why it is critical that the people that make the decisions about these children are, not only do not reject the data, but they stay on top of it. Seven days ago, we found out that children from age 0 to 5 actually contain, this is from Harvard Medical School, up to 1,000 times more of the virus concentration in their lungs. Quote from the Harvard Medical School is that children are very, very contagious. Five days ago at Shands, five days ago, they for first time conclusively proved that the virus is airborne, and they were able to capture it from 16 feet away at levels that are probably infectious. There is absolutely no way to safely reopen the schools, and I ask you to find, there, there's a number that you have to decide, and that is, what is the acceptable level of dead children in Putnam County? And not just children, but their parents, the people who work around them, the teachers, the school bus drivers. I did a little quick math. If you take the number of US deaths, the number on under 18, which is so far 82 deaths, that gives us mortality rate of .00047. If you multiply that times the number of students in Putnam County, which I believe is about 11,000, that gives you five dead students. This is not, the number of children who die will be more than zero. If you're lucky, it will be five, and the number of people they infect that die will be in the hundreds, if not thousands. So I ask you to figure out what that number is and let us know. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marvin.
Thank you, Anthony, and you look very much like your dad. He punched me in the nose one time and busted my nose, and I couldn't run him down, so tell him I said I love him and hello. All right.
We're gonna take a three-minute recess. Okay, thank you for your time. We are now ready to proceed with the meeting. At this time, Item D, the approved by Superintendent under the emergency power, after the FACS stipend payment for Learning Science, that's that, LSI Conference for Ms. Loretta Johnston.
I make a motion that we approve the act through the FACS stipend payment for LSI International Conference.
I second. It's been motioned by Mrs. Jane Crawford that we approve Item D1 after the FACS stipend payment for LSI Conference for Mrs. Johnston, second by Mrs. Holly Pickens. All in favor, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposers, hearing none. Our motion carries 4-0. Next item.
Madam Chair.
20, oh, okay, 2020, 2021 Personnel Allocation Change Number 5.1, the CARES Act.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve 2021, 2020, 2021 Personnel Allocation Change Number 5.1.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. Bud McInnis that we approve Item D2, 2020 to 2021 Personnel Allocation Change Number 5.1, and second by Mrs. Jane Crawford. All in favor, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposers, hearing none. Our motion carries 4-0. We are now ready for our consent agenda. We will start with Mr. Bud McInnis. And prior to that, Item Number H2. Item H2 has been pulled. Item H2 was pulled from the agenda. All right? Now, Mr. McInnis.
I had nothing to pull.
Thank you. Mrs. Crawford?
I have nothing to pull.
All right. Mr. Buckles?
I came in ahead of time. It all looks good to me.
All right. Mrs. Pickens?
G2.
All right?
And that's all.
Oh, okay. I was about to write it down, but I have it written down. I was gonna pull it, so I'll just allow you to do it in that way. All righty. Okay? We need a motion now to accept the other.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion. We accept the consent agenda minus G2, and wasn't there another one?
No, no. H2 was pulled.
H2 was pulled.
Yes.
Okay, but G2.
Yes, sir.
I'll second that.
All right. Motion by Mr. Buckles that we accept the consent agenda minus Item G2, and it was seconded by Mrs. Jane Crawford. All in favor, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposers, hearing none. Our motion carries 5-0. Mrs. Pickens?
Madam Chair, Mr. Bowlen is here and has the staff here to answer any questions you have about that.
That was the one I had. Log me in.
I'm gonna introduce Justin Lennon. He's our program manager. My name is Lennon Harvey, IT Director for Putnam County School District, and I'll talk to.
Mr. Lennon?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Do you have questions you wanna bring up first about it, or?
I talked to Mr. Bowlen, and he said that Justin was gonna share some stuff.
And I talked with Mr. Bowlen, and he told me that he would share. Yes, sir.
Justin, say your name really loud and clear into the microphone. I wanna hear this.
Okay, I'm Justin Lennon with the Information Services Department. G2 is basically, looking at our phone bills and what we pay across the district, we started seeing that in some cases, we're paying a lot of money for the phone services that we have, and we started looking at what our possibilities for the future with the phone system are, and this is basically an option where there's a significant cost savings moving forward. I'm projecting somewhere between $44,000 and $51,000 a year in savings with our phone bill.
Wow.
By moving to a voice-over IP option, unlike the standard analog phones that we currently have, it'll bring in potential for cost savings and give us more features with our phone system that modernizes our district.
What's the startup fee? I'm sorry.
Eight thousand seven hundred eighty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents.
Startup fee, there is the, there is the cost for the equipment, which, like I said, if we can move forward with that, then we'll put that out to bid, but like I said, worst-case scenario quote with that was 100 grand, which I believe in our IT budget, we can cover this year. And at the rate of saving between, like I said, projecting 44 to 51K a year, we should be able to recoup that cost within a two-year period.
I had a, I had a conversation with Mr. Bowlen prior to the meeting earlier today, and it sounded very good to me, so, you know, it's up to you guys.
What would be some of the special features of this program? Log me in. I tried to read it and understand to the best of my ability over the, what we're using now.
Right, right now, we just have a basic phone system. Actually, a lot of the schools currently have the same phone systems that were in place when I was a student there. So there's features like call reporting, like, for example, we don't have to reach out to the phone company if, if you find out if somebody called in a threat to the school. Voicemail for all teachers. There are some schools that share a phone between classrooms. We hope to resolve that. Flip over here. I was gonna say, Kyle, Kyle could step in. As I can say, Kyle, Kyle could step in.
Kyle Liliquet, Information Services Department. So pretty much, yeah, it would pretty much modernize us, like, we can do e-faxing. E-faxing is something that where you can send an email to a specific email address, and it sends a fax for you. Like, you don't have to go to the fax machine. You don't have to do any of that. There is, of course, shared voicemail, and we can get into even in-depth stuff, like for our department, where we have individuals that are manning phone lines. We can, almost like a call center, we can actually monitor, well, not exactly we want to monitor them, but like, if we want to do, like, quality stuff, we want to train them on something. We can, you know, just be on the back end listening, and we can give them tips during and after the call and all that kind of jazz. Like, there's, the potential in it is, I would say, revolutionary compared to what we currently have. Our system right now is like the airwave TV versus like the cable TV box right now, I guess you could compare it to.
Okay, and so this will be at all of our schools and the district office? Okay?
Yes, it would include all the district facilities, and there's also the, one benefit that comes out of this is the term softphone. So essentially, you could also have a situation where a school administrator could install the GoToConnect app on their mobile phone, and if you dial their extension, it could ring to their cell phone wherever they are on campus. One of the benefits also for security, we've got a, we're looking at a device that ties into the system that would technically allow them to initiate a lockdown or even use the intercom system anywhere on campus.
Okay, and one final question that I have. Are there any other districts that you kind of conversed with to see how this thing is working with them, or we're kind of on the cutting edge first to do it?
I mean, there's other districts that have taken different routes to get to voice-over IP, but like I said, based on testing, evaluating, talking with different vendors over, I think it was like the past three years.
Oh, okay.
Pretty much came to the conclusion that this was a good fit for our district, and we've technically been in a demo trial with them since before the whole COVID lockdown happened. The help, the student help desk hotline was brought up in twenty-four hours through this demo, and we've had that since the necessary need for that line came into existence.
As we've seen earlier, the coming future, we really, we can try to prepare for, but we really don't know what the future holds, and I think this gives us an opportunity to let the administration be able to find ways to communicate in a more rapid and concise fashion. I just, that's why I'm in favor of it.
And to add to it, if we do end up in some kind of state where we do have to close down schools technically through the softphone feature, we could still communicate through the apps or through computers with the same extensions like you're at work.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you, guys.
All righty. I'm okay. Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item G two, replacing phone service fees across all of Putnam. Log me in.
I'll second that motion.
All right, it's been motioned by Mrs. Holly Pickens that we accept item G two, replacing phone service fees across all Putnam sites. Log me in. And second by Mrs. Jane Crawford. All in favor, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposers, same sign, hearing none. Motion carries five, zero. We are now out of regular session and into our emergency session. Item number one, after the fact additional work hours, August twenty twenty, paraprofessionals at Price Middle School, justification, explanation, time sensitive.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the emergency item number one, after the fact additional work hours, August twentieth twenty twenty, paraprofessionals at Price Middle School, justification, explanation, time sensitive, adjoined with a letter from CH Price Middle School and Ms. Michelle Higginbotham, and wait for a second.
I second.
All right, it's been motioned by Mr. David Buckles that we accept our emergency item number one, after the fact additional work hours, August twenty twenty, paraprofessionals at Price Middle School, justification, explanation, time sensitive, accompanied with a letter, and second by Mrs. Holly Pickens. All in favor, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposers, hearing none. Our motion carries five, zero. We are now out of emergency session. We do not have any unfinished business, but we do have item N one and two, discussion, new business.
Madam Chairman, as we know, even though we had a wonderful group present to us today about the uncertainties that, of life that we can't, we can't, we can try to prepare for but can't predict, I would recommend that we continue to allow the superintendent to work with the emergency powers to get us through this critical time that we're dealing with. You know, not everyone's gonna be happy with what we do, but for the fifty percent of the kids who are being abused and sexually abused and mistreated out in the outerlying areas, wherever that may be, we need the superintendent to be able to do the things he needs to do, so that's. Do we need a motion on that, Charlie?
Yes.
All right, I'll make a motion that we approve, and then I guess you can get a second for discussion, the resolution to grant emergency powers to the superintendent.
Second.
The motion by Mr. David Buckles, that item N one, discussion input and action, resolution to grant emergency powers to the superintendent. Now we're open for discussion. Any discussion?
I would just like to say that in the event that we, school begins and we have an emergency, in order for all of us to get together when a critical emergency happens, I think it's just imperative that we do this.
Yes, along with the caveat that we are made aware of anything that comes before you that you deem an emergency. Okay?
Yeah, and as far as informing you and making you aware of what's going on, and then later on in the next meeting.
Not trying to get us together to vote.
I understand, yeah, I understand, keep you abreast of what's going on.
And we just know what you decide to do.
Sure.
Okay, any more discussion? All right, we're ready to vote. All in favor, where did we get a motion? I can't remember.
I made a motion.
We did get a motion, yes.
Second.
And second, yes. All right, all in favor, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposers, hearing none. Our motion carries five, zero.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve consensus to advertise amendment to policy number eight four zero five point zero two, behavioral.
Okay. Attorney, do we?
I would call it the rolling, and if your decision is to put this matter to advertise, then your remark would be to advertise.
Cool.
Yes.
All right, so District one?
Advertise.
District two?
Advertise.
District three?
Advertise.
District four?
Advertise.
District five?
Advertise.
Okay. All right, at this time, we are into our reports from the board members, superintendent, well, attorney, and then the superintendent. All right, we're gonna start with you, Mrs. Pickens, and we will make our way around.
Well, I would just like to start by saying thank you to the district staff for all the work that y'all have done trying to get this school year off, and it's way different than anything anyone has ever even dreamed of. I'd like to really thank the IT department for the streaming of the videos for graduation. I got to attend three graduations, but the two that I didn't get to go to, I really appreciated the fact that I could see it on, you know, on video, and so just thank you. I know that takes a huge amount of work and knowledge that I don't have, so I'm very appreciative of it. I'd like to say welcome back to our teachers. I know many are apprehensive, and, you know, we're just here to support you any way we can. And of course, congratulations to the graduates. I also would like to thank Ms. Crawford. I think your speech at EH Miller was wonderful, and busy bees, I'll remember that. And lastly, I just want to mention that at our last board meeting, I forgot or was very remiss in not remembering a teacher that passed away at Middleton Bernie Elementary School, Ms. Miller. I didn't really know her. I went back and I read comments on their, from their website, and I'm sorry that I didn't know her. She seemed, she was loved by everybody, her, the teachers she worked with, her students, and some of the comments that the parents wrote. It was truly, it made me feel good that we had a person like that, and sad that we don't have that person anymore. And then lastly, Mr. Ramirez passing away. I did get the chance to know Mr. Ramirez, and I saw firsthand how kind he was to students, and how kind he was to parents, and how respectful he was, and, you know, that's a big loss in a school. Your dean and someone that's been around for a long time. I happened to see on Facebook a post that a rising senior put about Mr. Ramirez and the fact that, what a wonderful difference he made in her life, and I thought, wow, that is, that's a legacy, and that's just, that's why we get into teaching, to give children those experiences. So it's a huge loss for the south end of this county and for the students, and it impacts them in ways that we're probably not even gonna know. And so I just want to express my sympathies, and I want to thank them, and I want to thank their families for the sacrifices that they allowed those teachers to make. And I would also be remiss again if I didn't mention that Pooh Bear Williams has been offered.
I'm gonna bail out one of them.
You know, it, I'm really happy for him because he's moving on to something that could be a little different for him, and, but the lives that he touched as a coach, both of my sons were coached by him, and he's a great guy, and I wish him all the best. His successor, Sean Delaney, is gonna do a fabulous job, and it's cool that he was a graduate, so he's, and played football, and so there's really still gonna be the cohesiveness at Crescent City High School, so that's all I have.
And if I understood the article correctly, he is going to stay in South Putnam, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, all right. I thought that's what the rabbit was. Thank you.
But he'll still be around.
Yes, he'll be probably on the sidelines on Friday.
And is this the time that I should mention questions, or should I just wait?
However you want to do it, and we.
Let's go ahead and give our reports first, then we're going to.
And I was gonna say some comments about that, and then have our staff available, if that's okay with y'all?
Yeah, I have to ask a question.
And so what we'll do now is just share the things similar to what Mrs. Pickens has. Mr. Buckles?
I was just calculating briefly in my head the dozens of grandchildren, nieces, nephews, and their children and relatives that I love and dearly to my heart, and all their friends, which would probably go into the hundreds that are going back to school. And I go back to this meme that I had removed when some self-described activist had already taken a clip from a board meeting and shared it over two hundred times throughout the state of Florida, and I researched it and looked and saw that they really like to put a real hot light on elected officials and anybody that they can, if they can try to create problem. They're kind of like, and they're not just activists, they're more Antifa-type activists. I'll say it to myself, and this is my opinion. When I state something or on Facebook, and I hate to give up my First Amendment right to how I feel, not everything that I have put there is something that I truly believe. It is to digest and to try to figure out what is going on, because I can't watch anything that I see on news, on any channel, or anything I see on Facebook that I think is real. But when I see the thousands of people that have had to keep America going through this time, and I just, it kind of blows me away that I know people in this room, and I know people in this system that would give their lives for a child, and would get between them and someone with a knife or a gun, and what they would do, and that's, when you sign up to work, you are acting in place of the parent, and you are by law called to do what it takes to keep that child safe. Now, there is probably a little less than fifty percent of the children that are probably gonna be safer and more nursed in school than they are at home, but it doesn't, I don't know of a better way to say it other than you either, you've either gotta teach, learn, or get out of the way. The school administration and the people that are trying to find a way to make this environment work, to get America back on its feet, are doing everything they can within reason to try to figure out a way to accommodate our children and the ones that want brick and mortar. If, you know, I just can't imagine putting any more on the superintendent's plate. I mean, we've got it made. We're up here, we do policy. We don't have to worry about the stuff they're catching. We get blamed for it, and if it makes people feel better that I get blamed and nobody else does, then that's probably a good thing. Just put it on me. If you feel like you're beyond doing what you're paid to do to do and work with a child, who I love so much, and I know that'll probably create some more of this stuff, but be that as it may, I love the people of this county, I love the children of this county. I've taken guns off of people that brought them to kill kids at school. I've taken straight razors, knives, I've held people in my arms, employees, while they died, their last, gave their last breath. The last thing I need is to be lectured about something that I'm well aware of. When you see kids die on a field trip, or you see kids die at school in a gym class when they fall and hit their head on a bleacher, or, you know, parents come to a PTO meeting, have a heart attack and die. It just, if it can go wrong, it will go wrong. What happens in the community is going to happen in our schools. We are a microcosm of society, and I don't know that I can explain it well enough to make people understand, because I guess I'm the, thank goodness, I'm the point guy, and you guys aren't catching the grief like me, so, but that's fine. I've been through it before. I would like to say that for those that are, all the kids that are already practicing volleyball and sports, and all the kids that have been doing the things that they're doing that the public really doesn't know, I want to thank them, but I'm more than, I'm more than awed by the job that our teachers do, by and large, the most of them. I don't know of any teachers who would be scared to come talk to me, because I don't have anything to do with what the teachers do. I mean, I can't, all I can do is pass policies that'll help them. But anyway, I pray, I pray every day, many times a day, sometimes with you guys, that our schools are safe, and our kids and teachers are gonna be safe, but there will be problems, and it's gonna happen, and whatever a majority of this board decides is up to the majority of this board. So I don't make the decisions. I'm one vote, and I'm one opinion, and my opinion changes from time to time, but I will not be defined by some cartoon that went through at just trying to say there is. there is, there is millions of people in America who have no, have no choice. And they've had to just go and do and be right out there in the public eye and, and get sick and keep going. And it's, 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 it's a miserable situation for America. But if we all pull together, we'll probably get through it. And no, I don't have all the answers. So with that, I'll pass it on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buckles. Mrs. Crawford?
First thing I would like to do is reiterate what Holly said about Mr. Ramirez. What a, what a tragic, terrible loss to our school system, to his friends and to his family. It just absolutely breaks my heart. And it also breaks my heart that we lost one of our most dedicated teachers in Putnam County. Kim Miller was in a horrible, horrible car accident through no fault of her own. And I remember her when she was at Black High School as a student. She was the most beautiful little thing you'd ever laid your eyes on and just the cutest, sweetest, brightest personality. And again, I, you know, I'm having trouble believing it. Switching to something a little lighter. School board members and superintendents have to do ethics. Any elected official for that matter have, have to do ethics training every year. And since we're not gonna be able to go to our conference in December where we typically do it in person, they have, have it on the website. And it, I'm telling you, it is the most interesting thing that I've attended yet or watched yet about ethics. And it would be, to me, it would behoove everyone on this staff down here, even the ones that don't have to do it, the leadership team, the secretaries, anyone involved with the day-to-day actions that go on in this building, to watch these three videos. There is some very, very important information, information that I had never heard before and a lot of information to dealing now with COVID issues that we've not had to experience before. They're, they take a little time, but, you know, I've kinda spread it out and kinda do it in between this show and that show and watch it while I'm watching TV, but it has been very, very interesting. Holly also mentioned the E.H. Miller graduation. What a blessing. It's always my favorite graduation. This year, they held it outside under the, under the oak trees. It was in the shade. Mr. Sarnie was there and he can attest to how wonderful it was. Twelve graduates this year and it's always very special and I was honored to, to speak at that graduation. That's really all I have except for the questions that I have concerning the reopening of schools. And you have asked us to wait.
Yes. Thank you so much.
Sandy, I neglected to mention Kimberly Stone Miller, who was Kim Stone.
Did I just?
Yeah, but she was, I, I was gonna say she was a student assistant that worked in the dean's office when I was a dean many years ago, as was some of your, your nieces and nephews. But she was a wonderful young lady and, and I have just been heartbroken over Mr. Ramirez as well. So I, God bless Miller Intermediate and, and Tim Adams and the students at that school. That's all I can say. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. McInnes?
Okay. I wanna echo what everybody's already said already. Thanking the team and the teachers and staff and maintenance and everybody working as hard as they are to get things back on a semi-normal basis. And welcome back, teachers. I wanna congratulate the products of Putnam recipients that didn't get to come. It's just something that I really enjoy watching too. And I wanna take this time to acknowledge Dennis Dolan. He was in our agenda today. And I, our paths crossed at Aquila. I guess it was like my, when I was determining, deciding if I was gonna go into management and the postal service or not. So I met Mr. Dolan and he's, he was my role model. I think he kinda like got me where I could think about maybe going into education at some point in time. Because he ended up, he was kindergarten teacher. And when I first met him, I think he was teaching second or third grade. So he's, he's got some stories and I just wanna honor him. And I thank the Palacade Daily News for all that they do for our district and our community. It's just a great partnership. I as well attended the IHS and Crescent City High School graduations and I watched the other three on video. And I think one thing that it really meant a lot to me, the first one was Interlockin High School, just seeing how the seniors were so glad to be back together, thinking that they would never see each other again. And it really brought me back to when we had to make the move when we were eighth graders.
Yes.
And we moved, we kinda lost our whole identity because we were pushed into a nine, nine through 12 system. And so I think that's probably, kinda dawned on me after I reflected back after the graduation ceremonies that maybe it might have been my, well, when we were in high school, the senior class was the bomb because it was David Buckles' group and we were the freshmen. We were never freshmen before because we, we were never freshmen.
Right.
And.
It was a bomb, alright, if I was at it.
But we, I mean, I remember establishing those relationships with our, they would have been our 10th graders because they were the last people we saw in junior high. So, I mean, just to hear the high school students at IHS, it, and they're very, they're very resilient and they persevered. And I'm just so happy that I got to witness. I made a promise to those people when I taught them in sixth grade that I would be on that field to watch them graduate. So I held my promise and they did too. Yeah. And I did get my Palacapanther scorecard. I hope everybody's gonna get one. My nephew is playing football this year and we were hoping he'll be a Gator one day. Be safe, everybody.
Alright, thank you, thank you. Ms. McInnes, I too wanted to mention Mr. Dennis Dolan. I remember when Lee Shiver hired him at Kelly Smith many, 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 many years ago. And then we lost contact with each other and we ended up back together at Aquila. So for 37 years, we do thank Mr. Dolan. I too want to express my condolences to the Ramirez family. Earth hath no sorrows that heaven cannot heal. And it's just one of those things and we, we'll never get used to it. And we just let them know that we do love them and are thinking about them. Mrs. Deal, the icon for, for homeschool, has moved away and, and, you know, we're gonna miss her and we thank her for all that she brought to the table.
Not yet.
She's not gone yet? Okay, how, how much longer do we have? December, oh, she's pushed back. Oh, okay. Well, hang on in there. We may end up with the, alright, alright. Okay, I'm not, I'm not, yeah.
We still need some cupcakes from her, so, yeah.
Alright, I too wish Pooh Bear well in his, his new chapter, new beginning. And then the final thing that I wanna say is to all of those employees that have reached their 20th year this year, we have not forgotten about you. The only thing, we are dealing with the times with this pandemic. And so even if it's done at the end of this school year, we will recognize you, those that have achieved 20 years of employment in the Putnam County School District, alright? At this time, we will hear from our attorney?
The state of legal affairs surrounding coronavirus is still very much in flux. As we sit here right now, the state's largest teacher union, FEA, is in a court order mediation with the state of Florida and the Department of Education on opening of schools. And they're having until midnight tonight to see if a deal can be reached. And if not, then pre-trial hearings will begin tomorrow morning at 8:30. This is something that everybody has their eyes on to see what the circuit court will do in Leon County and Tallahassee. But whatever the court decides, I can assume safely that it would be appealed and it will probably go up all the way to the Florida Supreme Court. But there are schools now who are opening and education will continue as if, unless the circuit court issues some type of injunctive relief to stop that. I, I don't necessarily believe that that would happen based on the ramifications and weighing out all of the factors. My belief is that it would, the school would probably move forward as classes have already started throughout the state until another appellate court would overrule or order otherwise. So we were continually monitoring and anything that comes up in that case would have an effect on this district as well. So we are working with the administration to keep everybody abreast of what is going on and the rulings that come from that. But otherwise, there are a lot of other issues besides COVID that go on day in, day out and weekly and we're here for as well. And then athletics and how the Florida High School Athletic Association is continuing to monitor and deal with athletics and the safety for the athletes is also part of what we look at and try to carefully consider for this district as well.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Superintendent?
Yeah, thanks for the update, Charlie. What I'd like to do is just mention a couple of, a couple items. And then I'd like to kinda give a few comments about some things we're doing as far as school reopening. And then our staff is here to answer specific questions related to, you know, whatever your questions are. So let me just say, again, going back to our, our two employees who passed away, our hearts are with their family. And, you know, I've said before, they're part of our family. And I was, I was very honored to be asked to speak at Mr. Ramirez's funeral. And actually, he was actually a former college student of mine. I taught him back in like 2010 in his group, you know, are all teachers now and, you know. And, and they talked about, I actually quoted one of his classmates that talked about how encouraging he was to that group of students who, as board members, you know, you're working full-time, you're going to school at night, have a family. It's, it's really challenging. But he did that and was able to overcome. And I also asked some of his principals he's had over the last 10 years, just to give me some of your reflections. So, you know, that was really priceless. Again, encouraging, you know, really building relationships with kids. And I just said, you know, his legacy will live on through the kids that he's touched. So anyway, prayers to his and Kim's family. We did, by the way, lose two students over the summer. I think we've talked about that. And, you know, the circumstances and all that, but our prayers go out to their families as well. You had asked at the last meeting about renaming a facility. And just to let you know that Mr. Bowling has been working diligently on that, forming a committee. And, and he is here to answer questions if you like. But he, he has also scheduled a meeting, I think, in the next two weeks or so?
Tentatively.
Tentatively. So again, we're going through the process. As you know, it goes through the renaming committee. They'll, you know, made up of a number of people. And, and then that will come back to the board as a recommendation at a later time. So the ball is rolling on that, no pun intended. But anyway, if you have any questions at some point, Mr. Bowling can definitely bring you up to date on that.
Rick, Rick, I would like to add that if, if it has to happen, I, I wouldn't have a problem with you guys just postponing that until we get school in session and going. But that's up to y'all. I mean, it's, we've got a lot of things to worry with right now. And I know I've got a representative on the committee as well as some of the other board members. So, but I mean, it's, I guess, people that make requests don't realize the gravity of what you're dealing with. And, but I'm sure everyone would understand if you have to prolong it, but that's, that's up to you guys.
And we, we wanna be respectful to the process.
Okay.
And, you know, again, I appreciate your comments, but, you know, we're gonna do it in, in due time. And we don't wanna prolong it. But again, we're trying to do things with that along with opening schools. But we definitely gonna honor that.
Alright, thank you, sir.
Let me see, looking at my notes. First of all, let me bring you up to date. Ms. France gave me these numbers hot off the press this afternoon. These are the numbers of option one, option two, option three, as far as students. For option one, we had 55% that specifically have requested option one. And 14% did not respond at all to the, to the schools, to the survey. So what we've done, we, they are default scheduled to go face-to-face. So that's a total of 69% of students that will be going to face-to-face. And that's been right about, pretty consistent, around 70%. 27% have selected option two, which is the synchronous learning option. And then option three, which is the, putting a virtual, is right about 3%. So I just wanna bring you up to date on that. And obviously, those numbers could change at some point in time as, you know, circumstances dictate.
Did you say 27%?
Yes, 27% for option two. Yeah, have those two. Ms. France gives you a report. Hey, she gives you every detail. Okay, out of our 10,533 total students, 5,848 have selected option one. And that's the 55%. The ones who make up the 14% of the default or ones who did not respond, that is 1,457. 1,457. Option two, the 27%, that, that number is 2,896. 2,896. And then option three, and again, each of these people who selected option three have received a phone call. And then they were either approved or have, have, have been scheduled on appointment. So 164 have been approved. And then 168 are still awaiting an appointment, okay?
They have a scheduled appointment.
Right. And we can, we can email these to you if you need. Let me just talk just, just a brief minute and then leave the rest of the time for questions. As you know, our leadership team meets weekly, meets every Monday morning. And, you know, dating back to the first part of July, we, we spent the better part of the day. We actually had a retreat off, away from school. So we, nobody could leave. I kept them in there. I said, we're not leaving till we do a reopening plan. So we spent a long time going through the data, discussing options and, you know, looking at the task force recommendation. So at that time, back July 6th, I believe, we actually came out with our reopening plan. And right after that is when the Commissioner of Education issued his mandate about, you know, we were gonna provide a face-to-face option five days a week with the option, you know, giving parents an option of choosing an online option as well. So that pretty much was in line with what our, our recommendation was. So since that time, we have been working and working and working. Ms. France and her team have been working on, you know, coming up with the instructional platform, learning management system through Canvas, building those courses so that these option two kids could, could have a, a real solid foundation. And then at the same time, Mr. Bowling and his group have been working on safety protocols. And we, we spent, and our leadership team, we spent a good amount of time. We gave principals a document that we needed them to come up with answers and, and specific procedures on how they were gonna meet some of the CDC guidelines. And specifically, what we're talking about is the minute a student arrives on our campus through a bus or a car or walks to school, how, what happens then? What is that school's protocol for making sure that child is safe from the time they get to school to the time they get to class? So we have each principal give us an explanation specifically what happens when they're in the classroom. What happens as far as, you know, wearing masks, social distancing, how's that gonna look? We want, we want that to be enunciated to us. You know, what are those procedures within the classroom? And as far as washing hands and the things that CDC guidelines talked about. What about changing classes, going from one class to the other, going to recess, going to the bathroom? All those items. to the bathroom, all those items were listed very specifically. Going to lunch, lunch looks different from school to school because they're, the way their lunchroom's laid out, do they have outside facilities they can use, all that. And then procedures for returning back home, you know, leaving, getting on the bus, going to the cars, all that was laid out. We went over that in detail each school. Mr. Bowling has worked on that, given principals feedback, has required those principals to turn that back in with the feedback information included. And what his team is gonna be doing is physically visiting all of our schools with those papers in hand to ensure they are following those guidelines and making sure they're doing what they're saying they're doing. So we have a lot of scrutiny to make sure that our schools are doing everything possible to keep our kids safe, okay? So just a couple other items real quick and then we'll, you know, we'll turn over questions. I talk to Kenneth Foster every day. I mean, she's on speed dial, she calls me up, I call her up, she calls our principals, she has our principals on speed dial now and so...
Explain who she is for the...
Yeah, Kenneth Foster is our epidemiologist for the Department of Health.
Thank you.
She's a person who is leading the charge for our battle against COVID-19 here in Putnam County. So we work with her very close. She's the one who will make recommendations to us as far as if we have a positive case, if we have contacts, if a classroom needs to be closed down and if a school needs to be closed, whatever would happen would first originate from her, because she is the expert. I'm gonna listen to her before I make it, before I recommend a decision to you. So we have her meeting, first of all, as you know, I think Charlie talked about Florida High School Athletic Association, their decision to begin fall athletics this Monday.
Right.
Well, with that, we're gonna have her meet with all of our athletic directors and all of our coaches. We want to ensure they are doing absolutely everything they can to make sure these kids are safe. And again, we're watching it close and I've told the newspaper today, hey, being a former coach, there's no bigger fan of athletics and football and volleyball and everything than I am, but we are gonna make sure we are doing things safe and if I see us not being safe, then we're gonna revisit it, okay? But we have her meeting with them, we've had, we're gonna have her meet with our, we call them our triage assistants in the schools, the ones who are, we've hired to be in our schools to make sure they man the rooms for those kids who show symptoms of COVID, you know, they're gonna have, that's their main job, that's all they're doing is making sure they man that one room, which is separate from our traditional health room. We have hired people, custodians, to come in and do nothing but cleaning during the daytime behind students and, you know, Thomas can speak more to that. So we have a lot of steps in place to make sure we're trying to cross every t and dot every i. Now, there's a lot of fear and we actually went out yesterday, when faculties showed up, we hit almost every school, we wanted to be visible and we wanted to answer questions or just offer words of encouragement to these teachers, because I recognize this is scary, this uncharted territory. Our principals are making decisions that they've never had to make before because we've never been here before. And I can't say enough about what our principals and sister principals are doing to build that trust with their employees. You know, they're doing everything they can to make their schools safe. And if you visit some of our schools, they've already put some things in place as far as, you know, some of our hallways look like highways. They've got a stripe down the middle, they got arrows this way and arrows this way and, you know, they're trying to make it as manageable as they can. So we did that, we visited with faculty yesterday and the ones I went to, I covered pretty much South Putnam and I went to Miller, that was a, you know, definitely an area that we needed to be at. Our teachers are very excited. I mean, they're frightened, they're apprehensive, they're anxious, but they're very anxious about getting started and having school start and see their kids again. Are there gonna be some bumps in the road? Absolutely. And we're here to manage that and to make some decisions accordingly, but this is a time we've never dealt with before and my staff works hours on end to try to plan that out. And there'll be some things we'll have to go back and change plans. But with that said, Madam Chair, I'm gonna open it up for questions and our staff is readily available to answer your questions.
All right, we'll start with you, Mr. McInnes, and then as we hear questions that we were gonna ask, we can just cross them off our list.
Cross them off.
Okay, and we'll be able to handle it.
And primarily have Mr. Bowling here talking about facility and safety protocols, Ms. France is here to talk about any instructional, and any additional staff that we need to call up here.
Okay, all right. Mr. McInnes.
Mine wouldn't be so much as a question, but the concern I hear from a lot of parents and teachers as well is we know the role of the teacher, they're the mentor, they're the nurturer, we wash, we clothe, we feed. My concern is the 1,457 students that didn't decide to come in. We know, I mean, we know there's no urgency to get this information in, so we kind of have to gauge, teachers are gonna have to gauge, their concern is how do we manage those students where the parents haven't indicated what they want to do as far as safety? Because my concern has been, okay, we can put all this stuff out about what you need to do properly and wash and everything and, you know, students usually are very responsive to that, just by my observation, what I've seen people say about how they handled summer school. To me, that was a trial and I call it a dry run, it's a dry run. We're going through something we've never done. So my question would be, and concern, how are we focusing on the 1,457 that the parents just didn't take any kind of energy to say where they want their kids to be? That's my concern.
Okay, Mr. Bowling, you wanna address that?
Now, was that question, I was multitasking, talking to Ms. France at the same time, was that question concerning students not wanting to follow safety procedures when they come back?
No, it's not so much that, it's the, it's the ones that, okay, if we haven't gotten the parents' attention to get their children in what option they want, how are we gonna get their attention about being safe? How does that transcend to the student from a parent that didn't care to put their child in an option?
Right.
That's my concern.
Well, I want to address that in two ways. First of all, I don't want to clump all parents into just one.
No, I'm not doing that, but we have a number though, you know.
But I'm one of those bad parents and I want to tell you why. With my son who's school age, the one that still is, we were given the same option and so if you did not respond, you defaulted to brick and mortar. So he was one that I knew would default to brick and mortar, so I didn't respond. I've done many other things to get ready for school and there were many other things that I had to interact with, you know, including paying for school IDs, et cetera, et cetera. But that's, that is why, you know, we're counting on a lot of those kids actually being aware or those families being aware that they are brick and mortar, so they're not going through the additional trouble of going on just to indicate that choice because they know that they will default to brick and mortar. Now, the ones who didn't, that just, you know, maybe they didn't get the information and they're having a hard, we're having a hard time getting in contact with them. I think every year sometimes it's a challenge with some families, getting in contact with them, but we have protocols at the school to, we don't assume that anyone comes in knowing any rules. We have to put in the work upfront, you know, we build rules, routines, and expectations and we teach those beginning day one, you know, hour one. Those things are taught and front loaded by every teacher every year. So this year, those things will be a little bit different, but it'll be the same procedure. If students just refuse to adhere to safety procedures, at some point they will be defaulted to option two. We give everyone a learning curve, we give stern warnings for doing things not like not wearing your mask properly or not following a teacher's routines when they come to safety. But they will go through progressive discipline that's laid out within our code of conduct. Randy Hestrom is meeting with our deans and those are some of the things, the specific things that they'll be covering in tomorrow's meeting. And they'll take those things back to the school, so we won't have 18 different schools doing 18 different things, we'll have a consistent way to manage misbehavior when it comes to safety issues. And we're coding it as such, violation of safety.
All right. I'm good.
You good?
Okay. And some of these questions are based on some of the comments that were made during public comment.
And by the way, Ms. Whitehurst is here if you have any questions, I know there are some comments about teachers and so on, but she's here also.
Well, this particular one isn't. Somebody mentioned about districts that are going completely online for the first semester. Are y'all aware of any districts that are...
I really was not. As a matter of fact, I almost looked back at Ms. France when I heard that, but I just didn't want to be disrespectful, if you will.
Yeah, I mean, I would just be interested in knowing what...
You have some South Florida districts that are able to do the first nine weeks being as, like, our option two, but those are very few and those are where there are epicenters still and very high, high rates.
Like the Miami?
Yes.
And they were exempt, they were exempt from the commissioner's mandate as well.
Understandably.
Why, because of their size?
Yeah, because of the...
And the number.
Their positivity rate. I will say Hillsborough County put in options much like ours, turned around, their board wanted to do the same thing Miami Dade was and it was not approved by the state of Florida or DOE, so they are having to go back to having the face to face option as well. So the state actually will not approve some plans.
Okay. Okay, probably, Tanya, this question is for you. Several people mentioned and it concerns me if it's in fact true, that there are teachers that requested option two and were not given option two. Is that true?
That, so when the options were put out there, it was said that they had the option to request to be able to work either digitally, like for digital instruction or in like more of an isolated area if it fell within what the needs of the school or this department was. I know our administrators have worked very hard at trying to meet every option to need of a teacher, because that one was the one that makes sense for digital instruction, but some schools had so many that you don't have that many students to do it. So if you have more teachers wanting to do digital instruction than you have students at your school doing digital instruction, you can't give them all option two. So they tried to make the decision as to which ones had medical conditions that would require that. We have...
They got first priority.
Yes, yes ma'am. We have some employees whose job, there's no way they can work in an isolated area away from everyone who wanted to do option two and became very upset when they could not do option two. But if you think about some of our jobs, you cannot drive a bus isolated, you cannot prepare and serve food isolated or digitally or in, there's just some jobs that we have that it's not going to work for. So I think they felt like that we didn't want to listen to them, but it was very clear, it had to be within the scope of what their job description is and what their primary role is before we could even try to accommodate it. So I can tell you, our administrators accommodated every person that they possibly could and when they had more that requested it, they had to look to see which one had the greatest need for that. I will tell you, we had some schools had to reach out to people and say, "I still need two more people to do digital instruction," because they didn't even get enough at their school site to cover that, so they had to work that out as well.
Were there any cases of teachers transferring to another school to be able to do option two?
No one reached out to me for that reason. So, and I will tell you that we did have a couple of people who ended up taking advantage of an early retirement incentive because they realized that they could not do digital all day. Or we have a couple that took an extended leave of absence for this year because they were gonna have to do partial digital instruction and partial face to face for the day to make up the schedule. I mean, every one of y'all have been in a secondary school, you know what a master schedule looks like in a secondary school, so.
My next question, I read an article today about counties in Florida that their superintendents are telling them, because they want to be very upfront with them, that there will possibly be furloughs in the future when they see, after first, you know, FTE count and that sort of thing. Could that happen here?
If kids don't show up, it would be...
We are...
I mean, do our teachers...
We are working on ways to make sure that does not happen.
Okay, because I figured I would have heard about that, because even at the college, we, he's had to mention furloughs.
We have, we have plans in place to make sure that that does not happen if it, if we end up having, like, you know, I mean, we can't control everything.
I know.
And we can't, we can't try to figure out the answer to every obstacle that we're going to face, but that is one of the things we have already discussed and we do have a plan B for that as much as we possibly can.
Well, I think that's wonderful. I also think, you know, in the worst of situations, they probably should be aware of that.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, control how many students actually...
And I know that we've got a couple of schools that their last couple of people who decided to take an extended leave of absence or who decided to do an early retirement, they're holding on to that position until they know what happens with their enrollment.
One kicker about a reduction in force or a furlough would be that, I don't know that you could do it voluntarily, it'd probably have to be by attrition to last hire, wouldn't it?
We have some new contract language that we would follow.
Okay, I was just curious, thank you.
Okay. Go ahead. No?
Have we been able to hire triage assistants at every school?
As of this afternoon, we had one, I believe, that had been approved at every school, we're waiting on, I think maybe two, is Jackie still in here, is it two? That we're still waiting on, background screenings on, they went today, we should have results tomorrow, so it should not be any problem. And they're actually being trained tomorrow by several members from the health department and then, so we also have a plan for other people at the school to be trained as well in case that triage assistant is not there. We will always have a backup plan for the triage room.
So these are not, I mean, they're not seeing AIs, LPNs, that sort of thing?
No, ma'am, no, because they're not doing any medical, they're only watching for symptoms and then reporting to the health department. Yes, ma'am. So they'll be trained tomorrow for that.
Okay. And then the last thing I wanted to say is...
Can I just, and we also have, I think, almost every school for the custodial support person as well, for the extra custodial support that we are hiring with, using the CARES fund.
Right.
And the last thing I wanted to say is I just really appreciate the people coming in today during public comment, they made some excellent points. And I understand, and this isn't just to you, Tanya, this is to everybody here, I understand that they're scared. I'm scared. I'm scared to death of what's gonna happen in Putnam County. And so, you know, I hate it that, you know, they kept saying they're afraid to talk, they're afraid to talk, teachers are afraid to talk, I hate that, but I remember being in that same position when I was a teacher, you know, you didn't want to upset your boss, but they brought up some excellent points. And I'm sure y'all thought of most of them.
I would like to say that I was receiving lots of comment, like, lots of messages that were saying that they wish that people could have seen how pre-planning has gone the last couple of days and the things that have been put in place in schools. And that I even had like some people like, that were saying, like, they feel like possibly that survey was done and those comments happened before some of our educators went and saw what else happened. And that like if, if they knew what our schools were really doing and the ways that they were rolling things out, that it may take care of some of that.
But they don't know.
But they don't know because they're not there, correct. You are correct. Yes, ma'am.
And so I understand that they have these fears. Like, one of my biggest fears, and I've had nightmares, two nights about it, is black high schools hallways when we change classes. I mean, I was there 35 years, I know what that looks like. And when you have that many students in a school, how are you...
And right now, they only have 744 showing up.
Well, that's, yeah, still a lot of kids.
Do you have any more people you...
Do you have any more people?
I mean, do we have Plexiglas down the middle of the hallway?
No, ma'am. Unfortunately, we don't. And the best we can do is one-way traffic and maybe we can do some staggered release. And all of those students will absolutely have on masks. We'll be monitoring that very carefully. The only thing that I'd like to add at the risk of climbing on a soapbox myself, I kind of feel like we have all been placed in this position where we have to figure out a way to make this work. And it almost seems as if, you know, people are thinking we're being cowboys going out on a limb, and we're basically told, you have to figure out a way to do this. Now, just in my neighborhood, and I'm thinking that most of everybody in here has similar stories, if you look at the young children outside playing, they're playing together and most of the time they don't have on masks. If you go out into the community and you watch the teenagers, they're hanging out together, and once again, they're not practicing acceptable social, safe sociable behavior. And there aren't many adults supervising that. And the infection rates are going up, up, up with children. And so I have taken it on as my personal responsibility to see how we can make those children even safer in our schools than they would be if they were at home. You know, where there isn't as much structure. We can control what happens in a school. And you better believe we will control what's happening in schools. We'll be out looking at the transitions first thing in the mornings. We want to see their lunch plans. We want to see how they go from point A to point B, how they get down the hallways. If you have people out there keeping them moving or students, back to your Platte High example, are allowed to just hang and socialize and hug each other and just do all the things that we typically see. Those things aren't allowed in this particular climate that we have to face. So I've taken it on as a personal responsibility to make students safer in our schools than they would be in their neighborhoods. Now, you know, every parent can say, well, you can't take care of my kid better than I can take care of my kid, and I'll own that. But collectively as a group, we will put rules in place to ensure the safety of our students and make sure that they're followed.
Well, Thomas, I've been around so long in the education system, I remember when they couldn't hold hands at school, or if Mary Louise Thomas would nab them. So, yeah, it's gonna, you know, it's gonna be, it's gonna be hard at first. I have faith, I really do, that y'all are doing the best that you can possibly do.
You know, I actually.
Just pray that your best is enough.
Same here. I actually heard a coach echo that same sentiment, Dan Mullen. He said when his, yes, he said when his athletes showed up, they had lots and lots of positive rates. And since they've been doing the structured workouts, they've almost disappeared because their students are, or their athletes are engaged and they have the medical staff and the supervision to make sure that they're doing all the things the right way. They're not just out on their own doing things with other athletes and peers.
I'm done. I'm sorry it took so long.
Mr. Buckles, and then we'll get.
My, you know, obviously, I've already addressed, you know, the people that didn't like the meme. The meme, you know, is just a meme. It was meant to infer that you're either gonna work and get paid or you're not gonna be able to get paid. And I don't know how we could pay teachers that are not, are not gonna have enough kids to work. I'm sure that you guys, like I mentioned earlier, Rhonda and all, have figured out a way. If we don't have enough kids to show up, you've got a Plan A and a Plan B. And I've been, I've been through it before. We never know until after the FTE count what we're going to face. So, you know, that's a concern. People need to buy groceries and pay the house payment, and it's just, it's just, it's a problem. And beyond the children themselves who you worry about, but I'm like a lot of you guys. I see the kids playing and they're not social distancing when they're home and in the community and all around, they're having a big time. And I let two of my grandchildren talk me into going to Walmart the other day, and they don't have a place to even sit down. And I thought, I just, all I could think of was catching COVID. And I know they do a good job of trying to keep you socially distancing there. But I just, I want to be prepared that if enough people, we don't know what, as Charlie mentioned, our attorney mentioned, this lawsuit will wind up, but I have to feel like the state will prevail in this. I don't know that, but I mean, we have to work off of the assumption that we're going to be working and if it changes, then, you know, who knows what's gonna happen? I don't know if, how you could possibly meet the needs of all the people that want to work virtually and how you could do it. So I feel, I guess because I have a daughter that's a teacher and I know what's been going on, and I know what superintendent and his staff have been doing and trying to, and trying to stay away from all this other, we want you to do this, we want you to do that, and try to get down to where the rubber meets the road and find out how to best serve our kids and help our employees in a rational, prudent fashion to keep them safe. And like I said, we are a microcosm of society. We are a mirror of society. If it happens out there, they're gonna bring something. It never, never has failed. If it happens in the community, it'll happen in the school. So we've got plans in place and God only help us to, we know that superintendent will contact us and follow all HIPAA guidelines in keeping us abreast of anything that were out of the way to happen. But I know, I know you and Rhonda and the staff are working close to make sure that we, you know, if we have some kind of strange, you know, and not strange, I'm like Jane said, I'm glad the people came today. I know some of it was directed at me, but that's good. I mean, if they want to be mad, be mad, and that way they're not mad at you guys. So it's all, it's all gonna, I think it's gonna work out, but it's, are we gonna have bumps? You bet. Even on a good day, you have bad times. So I really appreciate all that our teachers do and our employees do, our custodians, our bus drivers, our resource officers, and everybody that's had to work this entire time during the pandemic. I was stopped by a store owner before I came to the meeting today and said, are y'all gonna open school? And I said, well, we're on schedule unless something big happens. And he said, well, you know, we need to get kids back in school. And of course, the man is not an educator. He doesn't probably have the same concerns because he's walking around running his store and station without a mask, you know? But that's, those are the people I see. So, Thomas, you guys know I'm behind what you're trying to do and you have my support, and we'll try to figure it out.
And David just echoed what was said. You know, there's people on this side of the issue and there's people on this side.
Absolutely.
And you're exactly right. We're trying to stay down the middle and listen to facts and listen to the Department of Health. And we've got, we've got to build and maintain that trust with our, the people we serve. And we're doing that by dealing with hard facts and, you know, evidence and that type of thing. So we're not trying to play a game. We're trying to make sure we protect our kids and our staff.
And if, you know, if I'm off the far end and I need to be brought back to center, center of the road and.
And I wasn't suggesting, I'm just saying, there are different opinions out there.
I know, but I mean, that's what it's all about. Somewhere in the mix is the best solution. David Buckles doesn't know everything, doesn't have all the answers, and neither does somebody else. So, you know, but we got very, we've got hundreds of years of educational experience sitting right out there. You guys, it's not your first rodeo. You will figure it out.
Mrs. Pickens?
Okay, I really appreciated the public comment. I did wonder, I wish they had maybe come the meeting before on August 3rd. I don't know what the date of the survey is because I was concerned about some of the like inequities in South Putnam. And so I was concerned that no one, you know, they didn't say anything to me. And so I was thinking that perhaps this was to do with the Cambridge thing, which we have already addressed in another meeting. So that kind of, I just wanted to address that. And if I'm wrong, then I hope.
I'm not sure what they're referring to either on the inequities.
I think that's what they're talking about.
Well, one person mentioned the migrant program, and I can figure out where some of the complaints are based and coming from.
Mrs. Whitehurst, and excuse me for being rude and pointing at you, I think she said it best, the survey happened prior to a lot of things occurring that addressed some of these. Because Cambridge, that's what I thought.
Right.
Because the ones that had come prior to, that was their concern about their students not receiving what Platte High was receiving and, I mean, what QI was receiving, and it was already worked out.
But that was addressed.
I think, I think the survey came prior to.
Well, let me just say this to respond. I was, I was contacted by one of the people in the South Putnam community about some of the families down there may not have received it or understood it. And I just, I made this comment. I said, if you, if you will let us know, my staff will be more than happy to go down there and meet outside somewhere and bring, have our interpreter and make sure we communicate that. So I asked them to get back with us, have not heard back yet, but we are available to do that if we need to communicate in a different manner.
Right. And I'd be more than willing to be there. Just on that, we will always have an interpreter available.
Sure.
From, at our meetings.
Yeah.
Because that, I mean, obviously, that was good.
Thank you. Because I saw the person.
And there was a question about supplies, you know, for teachers to clean their rooms themselves, 500 wipes. So are we issuing that type of, or are the schools buying their own and then giving it to teachers?
The schools are buying their own, but they were given a supplement. And we gave them a line item, actually a couple of them through the CARES funding, and it's actually paying for all of that. And in our procedures, as much as we can, we don't have teachers trying to do a lot of cleaning. In some occasions, they may be using a mister to mist things down in between classes, but the typical protocol is to have students, if there's a fresh set of students, come in and use those wipes to wipe down their own area when they sit there and then wipe it down again when they leave. And, go ahead.
Is there a, I heard this, are we, is there a disinfectant or say, you know, whatever spray, if the wipes become, they're hard to get, so parents were asking whether there was a type that was approved that some you could spray and wipe with a paper towel, do we have?
Yeah, so the cleaning materials that we do have is the germ-killing chemicals that's approved for COVID.
But for a student to, or a parent to, you know, send in that and on the supply list, you know, do we have any that are approved or is that just not a good thing to do?
To my knowledge, I don't think we're requesting, and the instructional team can help me out with this, but I don't think we're requesting cleaning materials from students. I mean, we're taking care of those ourselves now. If a teacher says bring in, you know, on your supply list wipes, I'm sure the school administration, local administration wouldn't have an issue with that.
Or they'd let us know.
Or their own hand sanitizer.
Right.
But once again, we will provide those things upfront.
Okay. And the desks, there was a, they mentioned something about, we did.
I wish I could get that specific comment because in every instance that I'm aware of, we were able to find desk, and I personally know where some are.
Okay.
And our old purchasing department in East Platte.
You don't have, you don't have.
If you as our board members, if anyone reaches out to you or anyone reach out to you, just refer them to me or give me a call and I'll.
Fifty percent brick and mortar, there shouldn't be a shortage of any desk anywhere.
And I also was asked, would, like a bus drivers, do they have a supply of masks in case a student comes? So they will be given masks?
Yes, ma'am. And they have the protocol that I think you've probably heard, every other district has. If they don't have a mask, they'll be given a mask. They'll load from the back to the front, and then they'll disembark from the front to the back. At the end of the morning routes, the buses will be sanitized and then again after the afternoon routes.
Oh, so that's new, that they'll be sanitized.
And the CARES custodians that we're hiring for each school, each bus compound is getting one of those as well. So it won't be the bus drivers who will be cleaning those. It'll be this one person who has, that's all they do. They go after the routes are over, the buses come back to the compounds, these people go and sanitize every bus.
And then the last thing, I would like to go to the three schools in my district when you do the plan thing. If you'll let me know, I'd like to.
Well, if you would like to be there with me or one of my staff members, we can let you know ahead of time when we're gonna show up. But I welcome you as a board meeting, a board member to show up anytime at any school and call me personally if you see something that you deem unsafe.
Okay.
I'd let them know ahead of time if you're gonna stop at a school too, because they, for whatever reason, they feel like some of us are the president. I don't know.
Brown and Pierce, Brown and Pierce, I'd like to know and go.
I will.
Okay. Everything that I was really going to discuss has been taken care of pretty much, but I do want to say that my heart was saddened, for lack of a better word, to hear that teachers are afraid, you know? Afraid of their jobs and so some didn't come because they were afraid or didn't come because they were unable to. I don't feel with everything that I'm hearing from the leadership team that we have created a hostile environment. I think a lot of the people that are making some of the comments, again, made them prior to things were addressed. And I think when we saw that Miami had gotten the honor to, well, not the honor, the go-ahead to do what they are going to do, we didn't realize how and why they got it and that there were other districts that said, okay, Miami got it, we're gonna get it. It didn't happen. So we have to adhere to the rules, the mandates that are handed down to us, and we have to take what we're given and make the very best of it. And hearing what I've heard, I honestly believe that we have turned possibly every stone over that we could. And again, are there gonna be bumps in the road? Is there gonna be a stone that we missed? Yes. But it would not be because we intentionally overlooked anything. Yes, we're afraid. All of us are. Anyone is afraid of the unknown, and especially when you're fighting an enemy you cannot see.
Amen.
You are afraid. And so do we become paralyzed as a society? No, we can't do that. We have to do what we have to do to the best of our ability and make it as safe as possible for all of our children. I got one. Don't have any, didn't give birth to any, but I have a niece that would be going to Brown and Pierce that makes me feel like I hung the moon.
Absolutely.
Just what she says to me, and I think she knows how to work me, but that's okay. I don't mind being worked, but I am concerned about her. But I honestly believe that everybody at Brown and Pierce is gonna do what they do to make sure our children are safe.
Their motto's always been.
My sorority has partnered with Mellon. This is our third year in a row. We sent a letter to them, how can we help you? And Mellon said, you can help us buy lanyards to hold the mask on. That's thinking ahead. You can provide tissue, facial tissues for us, and that's what we are doing. And so we're in this together. We don't ever want it to be like Dr. Serancy said, us against them. It's not. We're in this together. It's not. We're in this together. Everything that happens in this district affects all of us. I was listening to the bus, I don't know her title, bus director, transportation director from Jacksonville, Duval, and she was bragging about their plan where they finally come to an agreement with the two bus companies they use. They're doing the same plan that we're doing because they couldn't get what Miami got. And so we're gonna watch closely. We're gonna run with it. We're gonna try and keep every employee, every student safe so that they don't take anything back home to their parents. But in turn, we need the parents to work with us to say, hey, Johnny has a fever. I'm not gonna send him today. We need that more so than ever. And so with that being said, I like the way you addressed the refusal to wear masks. Heard Jacksonville, they got a plan, pretty much like ours. Then you're saying you're not concerned about the safety. And so we, they default to option two. So you're thinking, you're thinking and you're working. And initially, when I listened to all the comments, because it did concern me, I do care that they care. Every comment that came, every person that spoke, I listened intently, not just with my ears but with my heart. I listened because we care. But I don't want them to feel like we're throwing our children to the wolves because we're not. And our teachers. We, we care. And I dare to say we love them and we want the best for them.
Absolutely.
And that's why we made sure that on the 31st or the 30th of August, there will be a paycheck. That committee got together and worked. We want that to happen. Money isn't everything, but we want them to be able to, to support their families and do what they need to do. And so we're just asking them to trust us, that we do have their best interest at heart. And with that being said, I'm, I'm done.
Sandy, one, one last thing I just want to say. David Buckles doesn't decide whether we start school or not. Rick Cerencey can recommend, but only the board can and a majority of this board can, can recommend. And I, I just want to state that for the record. I think all of us have been in education long enough that I know every one of these people up here would have given their life for their students. I'm telling you, I, I know them well enough to know. And that's, that's a hard thing to say, but that's, and you would have too, Thomas, and all of you out there. I, I know. It's just the way it is. So with that, I, I would like to ask a lot of prayer from the public. That's all I can say.
We are gonna meet with our principals again this week, one final time, just to make sure there are no, nothing we haven't covered. So we've been communicating with them weekly.
And, and God forbid, should there be any cases at any schools, assure the people, assure our teachers and, and our, our families, our parents, that we have a plan in place.
And I, and I just want to say one thing. I talked with Ms. Foster earlier. We've given her every phone number, cell number of our principals and assistant principals. For this reason, we want to be transparent with our citizens. We don't want to, we don't want to be vague and say, well, it's such and such a school, it's such and such a group of kids. We want to let them know if there's a situation that happened at an athletic event where their child might be exposed, we're gonna say that. We're not gonna give names, but we're gonna say this is where it occurred because there's too much at stake here and we've got to make sure we're open and honest as we can. So we're, that's why we want our principals and, and Ms. Foster to clearly communicate that to the parents. So anyway, we'll come back in our next meeting, if not before, and I'll bring you another report. But again, we're a phone call away if you have something come up and we'll, we'll be glad to answer that.
We're text away.
Yep, text away. Yep.
And thank you to fellow board members for, for praying like you have. I just, I am so in awe of you guys. Y'all are awesome.
Is there anything else to come before the board, before we adjourn? Anything else? Anything from the leadership team? If any of you have something you would like to share, anyone else? Mr. Superintendent, all hearts and minds are satisfied?
We're good. We're good.
Okay. This meeting is adjourned.